If you would like to grab one of those to follow along with the meeting. And we also have some listening devices on that table as well. If you're having trouble hearing, you more than welcome to use one of those. And then also, I just want to make you aware that we do have our request to speak forums that are on that table as well. If there is an item on the agenda that you would like to speak about, I ask that you please fill out one of those request to speak forums and just turn it into the boxes right there. And then we'll be collecting those shortly. And I do ask that you please try to limit your questions, comments, concerns to three minutes. If you do have a question, just ask the question and then we'll try to address that once you're finished. I don't want to take any of your time away from you. So we're going to go ahead and get started. The agenda, Mr. Drury, do you have any?
No changes from staff.
Counsel.
A question to approve.
We have a motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, four zero. We want to proclamations, presentations, nothing under that. Swearing in by city attorney and disclosure of ex parte communication. Mr. Williams. Microphone.
We do have a second reading on the Amesdel Storage LLC, rezoning of 11.5 acres east of State Route 19. That's agenda tab number four for second reading. If you're here tonight to speak on that, you're required to be sworn in. Stand if you would, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear from the testament of giving us positive truth and whole truth and number of true self, God. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience who wants to speak on that particular item needs to be sworn in in an hour at the time you speak. And also, we will now go through the council members and declare any ex parte communications you have had either for or against this particular rezoning application.
Hey, Mr. Williams, I don't know if this is at this time, I do need to declare a conflict.
Yeah, you can re-declare it again at the time we do it, but I understand you have a family interested that's a lessee or something.
Yes, sir.
We'll do that again when we bring it up.
All right.
You don't need to declare ex parte communications, but you're not under the.
We want to reading of all ordinances and resolutions into the records. Ms. Novak.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two ordinances at second reading. Ordinance 2019-17 and ordinance of the City of Taveris rezoning approximately 11.55 acres, a property generally located east of State Route 19, west of County Road 61, approximately 140 feet north, a daily drive from Plant Development PD to Industrial I, subject to the rules, regulations, and obligations ordained by the City of Taveris Council, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Ordinance 2019-18 and ordinance amending section 17-54 of the Taveris Land Development Regulations pertaining to reclaim water rate schedule, providing for reclaimed water rates based on the study and recommendations of Raptelus, providing for annual rate adjustments through September 30, 2023, and providing for automatic rate increases to resume as of October 1, 2023. Amending section 17-55, providing for wastewater rate schedule based on study and recommendations of Raptelus, providing for annual rate adjustments through September 30, 2023, and providing for automatic rate increases to resume as of October 1, 2023. Amending section 17-56, water utility rate schedule based on study recommendations of Raptelus, providing for annual rate adjustments through September 30, 2023, and providing for automatic rate increases to resume as of October 1, 2023, and providing for an effective date. And we have two resolutions that will be read in their entirety during the budget hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Novak. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel. We have a motion to second, all in favor. Aye. Motion carries, four zero. Resolutions? We have no resolutions there. Ordinance, public hearing. We have first reading, nothing under first reading. We have second reading, tab four. And Mr. Williams, this is where I need to declare a conflict. My wife leases property, or leases a unit from the applicant and runs a business out of that.
All right, so the applicant's here. Are there any questions for any, do y'all have any questions of the applicant? Questions of anybody? Anybody in the audience would like to speak on this item, whether you filled out a piece of paper or not? Right, counsel, how'd you like to move?
I have to approve.
Motion to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes, three to zero.
All right, we are going to move on to tab number five. Ordinance 2019-18, wastewater reclaim utility rate study. Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. And members of the council. Ordinance, ordinance number 2019-18 is before you per. In response to a utility rate study recommendation that was presented to the council on August 21 of this year. In order to meet revenue sufficiency requirements for the water, wastewater, reclaimed, and stormwater, and also for bank loans, bonds, and state revolving loans. A utility rate study for the utility is generally accomplished every five years. The rate study was accomplished in a race in May of 2009 and presented to the city council on June 18, 2009. This study recommended automatic annual rate increases for water, wastewater, and reclaimed water using a 1% plus CPI annual rate increase. Council approved this recommendation. A subsequent rate study was implemented in September 2014.
One thing, does your microphone work well? If it speaks to you.
Presented to the council on November 9, 2014. The rate study recommended no change to the ordinance 2009-22 and 1% plus CPI remained in effect in the council's approval of that recommendation. On August 21 of 2019, a current rate study was presented to the city council by the city's rate consultants, Raptelus. Mike Raca and Joe Williams are in the audience that prepared the study. The study recommends a small decrease in water rates but a small increase in wastewater rates. The study recommends suspending the automatic 1% plus CPI increase until October 2023 and implementing the proposed rates that provide for an average combined rate increase over a four-year period of approximately 9.95%. That's, that 1.95% is if you do an average of the rate over the four-year period. And that's for residential customer with a consumption of approximately 4,000 gallons each month. And there's a table in your agenda summary that provided a demonstration for that. And I have the consultants are in the audience and prepared to give an additional presentation, a little shorter than the last one you've heard, just to reappoint you with the principles that you'd like.
I'd like to go ahead and have them do the presentation.
Yes. At this time, I want to ask Mike Raca and Joe Williams to come forward.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Mike Raca. With me is Joe Williams. We're with Raptelus Financial Consultants in the Orlando area here. Lori gave you a little bit of history. I'm going to add to the history of the background on the existing rates and past rate studies. As she said, for since 2010, basically, the rates have been adjusted by inflation plus one. Is this on? Okay, thank you. I didn't hear it there. And that method of adjusting rate has been successful and it's worked very well for the city and the utility enterprise. And one thing about it, it's avoided any major rate increases over time. You'll notice some communities have a 10, 15, 20% rate adjustments and that's because they don't address the necessity of keeping up with inflation. It's also provided the basis to support your capital improvement program. Most of the capital improvements are underground, so you don't notice it, but there's been major significant capital improvements to the water system, the wastewater system throughout the past 15 years here, all funded through these rate adjustments. It's also, the rate structure that's been in place has been what we call just and equitable. And that's required on chapter 18 of the Florida statutes. By just, we basically mean that there is a reasonable relationship between the charges that are in place, that is collected for services, and the cost for those services. By equitable, it means that all customers within a certain classification or the classification that they're in are charged the same rate, just and equitable. However, okay, during this rate study, we revisited everything as we always do. And we saw two major items that could be done. One is the amount of revenue that was projected to be generated from the inflation plus one could be reduced. We didn't need to rein as much revenue as it would have. And that's due to several things. One, the management of the system and the growth of the system and some economy of scale. But we did find that there was a rebalancing that was going to be necessary. By rebalancing, what we mean is that the revenue generated by the water rates far exceeded the amount of fiscal requirements for the water system. And the revenue being generated by the wastewater system was insufficient. So therefore, we rebalanced the rates to where they would, over time, generate the amount of revenues that was needed for each of those major functional services. The program that we laid out with these adjustments will provide revenue sufficiency and address your capital program and continue to address the loan covenants that you have out there. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe, excuse me, and he will summarize some of the highlights of the rate study.
Good afternoon, mayor, council. So as Mike mentioned, you still have a significant amount of capital projects to be completed over five years. If this includes projects in this current year that's just about ending, so some of these are already underway. And you'll notice that there's primary funding sources, there's SRF loans. So it's going to be loans with the state, very low interest, low cost, and helps you spread the cost over future generations that are going to be benefiting from the improvements, not putting it all on your customers now. And then we're also using revenue generated from rates and impact fees from Newbridge. And next slide. And so if we, if you stuck with your current ordinance, which calls for inflation plus 1%, you'd be generating a significant amount of revenue. You can see on the blue bars, the water is generating large surpluses after paying all the expenses. And the green bars, which you may not really see much, are negative, is the sewer. And that's what Mike was talking about, is that there needed to be some rebalancing. The sewer doesn't catch up until towards the very end of the forecast. And we wanted to have that addressed sooner and with lower increases overall. So as you can see over the four-year period here, there's a projected about a 3.5% average increase each year. And on the next slide is a little bit more detailed table, but this is the recommendation that's in the ordinance in front of you for utility rates. And you can see in the first year, the water is being reduced. And then future years, it's being held constant. And on the wastewater side, that's going to be increased for the first two years at 5.5%. And off to the far right is what a typical customer would see. And you can see in the first two years, it's around 3% to 3.5%. And then it's much lower than that in years three and four. And over the four-year average, it's slightly less than 2%. So as Mike mentioned, you know, over the four years, we're recommending a reduction in rates to what your current ordinance would provide for. It's allowing you to collect less revenues from your customers in these four years. And the next slide, this is compared to the slide, the last chart we showed you, where as the bars were more of a U shape, or the purple line was more of a U shape. Where on the future, the revenue surpluses were closer to the top of the chart. It's on the same scale here, and you can see it's reduced now. This, while we're having lower revenues than otherwise would have, we're still able to meet all your loan covenants. Utility's in very strong financial position. And we're able to maintain fund balances. And on the next slide, we'll touch on this one quickly. These are projected fund balances over time. You can see that the blue bar is the most important one as your unrestricted funds that allow you to address future capital projects and emergencies that may arise is still growing over time while you're completing over $30 million in capital projects and taking on new debt service for the loans that you'll be getting. So you're still, you're still able to fund future capital and R and R and ongoing needs beyond the five-year period that we have here. So we're not setting you up just to barely get by at the end. You're still able to continue on. And at the time, a next rate study would come in, you'd be starting in a strong position. And you can look at what rate adjustments were needed over the next period after that. And finally, the rate comparison, so you can see you're in line with others. As we talked about at the last meeting, you have, you know, you've done significant replacement. You have very new assets and your rates are still very well in line with others. And you're looking at a very managed rate increase program over the next four years. You're not going to be jumping way up. We're, we don't know what all the others are doing, but there may be some that are jumping up much faster than 2% a year in order to accomplish the funding they need that you all really have already done a lot of the investments that you need. And that's, those are the results of the rate study and the recommendations set forth are represented in the ordinance.
Counsel, do you have any questions of the consultants at this time? I do what I just, so if I'm understanding this right, if we go with the recommendation, we are lowering the potential rate. And if we do nothing, the rate, as you said, will go up more. Second.
That is correct. The overall technical bill will be reduced.
We have two speakers on this. I'll have the city clerk call the two speakers up.
Thank you. Jim Carey, if you could come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jim Carey, Bay Tree, 705 Juniper Way. I don't understand when he says there's a decrease. And at the final line on the program, on the screen, it was a 3.5% increase total. So I don't understand when he says there's a decrease and yet the back line says 3.5% increase. I just want you people to understand that most of the people in this area are retired people. Their income does not go up as much as your building goes up. My water bill is over $100 a month. We don't do anything special. We don't water the lawn, anything. The water bill is over $100 a month. And to me, that is ridiculous. And it's also ridiculous to the people that are snowbirds. We live here permanently. And the snowbirds get charged almost that much when they go back up north and don't use any water, any sewer, anything. No garbage, no nothing. And they're paying $80 to $85 a month for no use whatsoever. It's just not right. I think the city has got to back up a little bit and start living within the means of what they have available, just like all the other people in this city. If you don't have it, you don't spend it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have request to speak forums that were filled out.
Did you fill out a form?
I did.
Yes, we're going to read the next speaker.
We'll call you up then.
Rodney?
All right, you're up.
Rodney Dale, 2400 Baywater. My question is, is this increase pay for the obligation to the water department incurred by the pavilion of something like about $2.25 million? In reality, the pavilion is never going to be profitable and will always have, it's not going away, but it'll always have to be supported. Now, is this increase going to pay for that $2.25 million, which has been static, has not been reduced? Is that in this, in this increase?
Well, do you have any other questions? And we'll definitely address any question that you have. But do you have anything else that you would like to ask other than that?
That's my question.
Okay, all right.
We do not have any other speakers registered to speak. Sure, I think the first question was, is the rate going up or down? The rate is going up. And it is going up on an average of 1.95% over the four-year period. So the rate is going up, a little less than 2%. The inflation rate is about 2%. So what they're calling for is the rate to go up consistent with the national inflation rate. So the cost to pay for fuel, to run the pumps, the cost for chlorinating and fluorinating the water, in theory, goes up consistent with the inflation rate. So the cost to provide water and sewer is going up consistent with the inflation rate. And the fee that you'll pay is going consistent with the inflation rate. So that was, I think, one of the questions, was is it going up? And the answer, it is, consistent with the national inflation rate. The other was, the, I think it was maybe a comparison of how other cities are doing. The proposed rate is less than Umatilla, less than Mount Dora, and about the same as Eustis. So the proposed utility rate is consistent with the golden triangle, actually a little less than what other utilities are charging for their citizens. And the base rate, you had a question, I think, about, if I leave and go up north, I'm still charged a base rate. And that is true. There is a cost to maintain the system whether you're using water or not. And what the utility, the folks that set up this utility many years ago said, everybody should contribute to the loans and bonds to build the plant. And if you leave town, kind of like leaving your house, you still have to pay for the mortgage on the house, even though you're up north. You still have to pay for the mortgage on the water plant and the sewer plant, even if you're up north. But you're not using water, so you're not going to pay for the water you don't use. So if you do go up north and you leave your house here and your water here and your sewer system here, you'll pay for the mortgage on the house and you'll pay for the mortgage on the sewer plant and the water plant. You will not pay for water or sewer that you're not using. When you come back from up north and you turn the electric lights on and you start running the water, you'll pay for the electric bill, you'll pay for the water that you use. So I think that was the answer to why are we paying for the water and sewer base rates if we're gone? You're really paying for the cost of having a plant and water ready for you 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. I think the other question was, does the utility rate being funded by the pavilion or have to do with the pavilion? The pavilion is its own enterprise. It's about $18,000 short of breaking even this year operationally. It's about the best it's done in its history. We're pretty excited that hopefully next year it'll be breaking even operationally. So the pavilion is very close to breaking even as far as income and expenses goes operationally. And it does not fund the water department. And the water department is in funding the pavilion. So those are the four questions that I got and the answers that I can provide. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Drury.
Sir, how is that operation?
Sir, I'm sorry, we don't accept people just shouting out in the meeting. I'm sorry, he's answered your question, but thank you very much for your.
I would like to add one thing. If you have additional questions, please come see me. Be happy to sit down with you. I'm right here in City Hall. Come on up anytime, appointment or no appointment. Ask for John Drury. We'll sit down and I'll answer any questions you have on this, that you have on the city.
Email a council number, call us. We're more than happy to discuss any items that you would like to discuss at any time. But just that right now, you know, we just can't have people just, you know, shouting out questions. But thank you very much for your concern. Counsel, you have questions? How do you want to move on this?
Yeah, I'm going to ask one question, I guess. Just to clarify, so in the next four years total, we're looking at 1.95%?
That is correct.
Average.
Over the four years, okay.
And Ms. Novak, if we do nothing, if we do not approve this tonight, what would be the average rate per year?
2.93% because the current ordinance would remain in effect.
Because we currently have an ordinance in effect that would increase by that amount if we vote on this that we have before us, it will lower that increase. And those funds can only be used for?
Those are water, wastewater for operations, debt service, normal costs that you see in the budget is what it comes. It's not considered restricted, but it's an operational fund and we do pledge the funds for our debt.
And when is the next study, utility study, rate study?
Vice Mayor, we will begin our study in. Vice Mayor, we will begin our study in 2023, at the end of this. Probably about six months before the fiscal year ends, for nine, nine to, six to nine months.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries, four zero. Move on to... General Government, Tab Six, School Resource Officer. Be the police department officer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. For the record, I'm Lieutenant Jones, Taverries Police Department. I'm Mayor Dale, Tab Six, School Resource Officer. The Taverries Police Department provides one police officer to Taverries Elementary School as a school resource officer. This is the second year in which Taverries Police Department provided such services when school is not in session, summer break, or holidays, the obstacle to build other goals and functions within the department. There are two options before the council. Option one, authorize staff to execute agreement for the SRO at Taverries Elementary School. Option two is to do not authorize staff to execute an agreement with Lake County School Board for an SRO at Taverries Elementary School. Staff recommendation is to recommend option one, and fiscal impact is identified in the summary.
And I've updated the summary and it should be in your folders. Okay, you've got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Jones. Any questions, Council? Okay. Would you like to move?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries, four zero. And we're going to move on to Tab Seven, Taverries Option Regarding the Eustis ISBA, City Administrator.
Previously, the city negotiated an inter-local service boundary agreement known as the ISBA with Lake County and all its surrounding cities, including Eustis. This agreement was successfully negotiated and executed by all parties, Lake County, all cities, including the city of Taverries. The ISBA sets the future boundaries of a city. Eustis is now negotiating their ISBA with Lake County. Attached, I've included the resolution initiating their ISBA negotiations with Lake County. They are currently planning to designate all of their current JPA. That's their joint planning area. It's pretty much the same thing, it's very close to an ISBA, a little different. But that JPA that they currently have is what they would like to make as their ISBA. And then they plan to do similar with all the other cities, and that is voluntary annexation, contiguous properties, including annexation that creates enclaves, and of course, the new E-911 system addressing standards. Lake County has invited Taverries to the Eustis negotiations table in the formation of this ISBA, which is protocol when forming an ISBA. Both resolutions and proposed boundaries shown limits the ISBA in Eustis to the current JPA, which has been in existence since 1987. Therefore, as the ISBA proposed by Eustis will not affect Taverries, the invitation by Lake County for Taverries to participate in the negotiations on the Eustis ISBA, we believe, should be respectively declining. And we are recommending that the council opt out of negotiations on the US ISBA creation. Back to you.
Council, any questions?
You're going to send off a nice letter that says, "Thank you," but then, "Thank you."
Correct.
And this won't make you look like a sheriff, show them off. Is it going to make us look bad?
No, probably be the other way around. It'll be, "Thank you for..."
Like we're trying to interfere?
Yes.
Okay.
Good question, good question.
Make a motion to approve, option one.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries, four zero. We're going to move on to Tab Number Eight, Impact Lake Invitation to Road Maintenance Funding Information Session, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Staff seeking which council members that would like to attend Impact Lake on happening and any questions?
And Impact Lake is what?
Impact Lake County is, I'll go back to this. It's part of Lake County, it's part of Lake County.
They're doing a study.
They're having the invitation with the tab two agenda.
So they're doing a, it's like a study to see if, about the gas tax.
For the five cent gas.
Correct. It's invitation to come down to meet with all your sister cities in Lake County, meet with Lake County, and discuss whether a five cent local option gas tax is a resource that should be explored for funding all of Lake County roads, of which a portion would come to all the municipalities. It's an informational meeting in Claremont at noon on a certain day, October the 16th.
That's correct.
And I just need to know who from this council would like to attend, so that I can properly advertise the meeting, if two or more of you will be attending. James and I will obviously be attending the meeting, getting the information, bringing back the information to you, on whether Lake County would or would not move with a local five cent gas tax in the future.
Anybody interested in...
I'm interested, but I can't...
I'm interested and would possibly be able to attend that. And Mr. Stevenson, would you?
If you'd like to back up.
Or if you would be interested to go? Because I think we can have more than one council, we just need to know if we need to advertise it.
I like that, because I like that. But everybody's always complaining about roads, so, you know, I know five cents is not a big problem, but everybody's always talking about roads, and we're able to solve those, like that's a Lake County road, it's not a Terry's road. But you said some money would be included in the power, is that right?
That's correct. We've got a full portion of that.
Yeah, that'll give us money to fix our Taverries roads, too. I'm, I'm all for it. How about if I did attend it? Yes, I'll need your backup, maybe we'll just go together.
Well, we could go ahead and, pardon me, say we possibly have these two council members, that way we can advertise it.
I'll do that. Very good.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Nothing else needed on this item? All right. We're going to move on to Tab Number Nine, Legislative Delegation Meeting, City Administrator.
Every year, the legislative delegation invites the cities and others to meet with them at the state college to identify any issues for the upcoming legislative session. Let us say, delegation which is made up of Senator Backsley, Representative Sullivan, Representative Sabatini, and Representative Hague, and Stargill, Senator, Stargill. An opportunity is presented to the council to identify some issues. I've identified some issues for you to consider. One is golf cart crossing over state roads. As you know, we have the first golf cart ordinance in Lake County, others have followed us, and we have gotten permission to cross one state road, State Road 19. We do not have the permission to cross State Road 441. And so one of the initiatives would be to take a look at that. We write a letter about every year, asking the state to consider that crossing, and it's usually denied. We do have people on the other side of 441 that would like to come to the downtown in their golf carts, and at this time, that crossing is available. So one of the legislative initiatives could be golf cart crossing that the legislative delegation could move forward through the legislative process. We rely on the state aviation program to grow our America Seaplane Center. It's a very strong program, and we would look to have our legislative delegation continue to support the state aviation grant program. We're one of a few airports that get grants from the state aviation program because we are an airport, and so we would like to see that continue. The face-to-stormwater program, we have fixed the stormwater runoff program from about the high school down to our lakefront. We have all the way to 441 to go. We have a good program. We're going into that area to improve the stormwater program, and we would like to look at a $750,000 grant to improve the stormwater program for the high school and north thereof. And as you all know, when we fix a stormwater, we pave a road. Many of the roads you see in the downtown, they're all repaved and redone, are through stormwater grants. So it's a kill-two-birds-of-one-stone program. You take care of your stormwater, you take care of your roads, they don't provide grants for roads, they provide grants for stormwater. The other is, we have a history museum that is moving into the old train station that the fire department used to be in. We have a senior center that we're moving forward with, and we have a library expansion. What we would look for is for you to approve these initiatives, and then I just need you to rank the grant funding requests. We've got one, two, three, four. If you like that ranking, that is the ranking we would move forward with, I will say that they usually only look at the top three. And I would also say that stormwater has a higher chance of statewide legislative appropriations than a library or senior center. That reason being is that the legislature is looking at funding things that have a statewide benefit. So if you're looking for a vote from a senator in Jacksonville or Naples on one of your projects, they will look favorably at a stormwater project, because that cleans up your lakes, which cleans up your rivers, which cleans up the state. If you're looking for a legislative approval, a governor's approval for a local project, it doesn't fare so well. So that's why you'll see stormwater, wastewater, water usually ranked at number one in these appropriations, because they have a higher chance of success than your local projects, which tend to get cut either in committee or the governor's line-up veto process. So before you is a request to approve the initiatives that we would present. I'd like to find out who would like to present. We can have a council member present, I can present, we've done it both ways. And just need you to rank one, two, three, and four in the order you would like them to be moved forward through the legislative appropriations process. Back to you.
Council?
I like the ranking as you have it listed, and as much as I would like to attend, I will still be at the airport when it begins.
Mr. Stevenson?
Sure.
Michael Futter?
Yeah, like, I don't, I don't think I could rank history, senior center, I think they're all good projects. We've discussed all of them. So I don't know which one would be better in any regard. October, what was it, ninth? I just, I'm almost at 130. I mean, I feel like I could do this. I, you know, I kind of want to volunteer Kirby. I think Kirby, or I should say Mr. Smith, but he's not here, he'll beat me up if I own here and if I don't. But this just seems, I mean, this is right up his alley. But I would do a yes on this. And then, some stuff on Ted, Mrs. Mrur.
Well, no, I think we could do the same thing. I like the ranking. I definitely am interested in attending this, just because these are all things that I've worked on forever. I mean, these are, these are all committees, and I've been the liaison for all these different things that we've been working on, and I have definitely would like to get my two cents worth in about the crossing the golf carts on Highway 441, because that's another, one of the projects that I've worked on from day one. So I wouldn't mind attending this with you, Mr. Drury, you know, your presentation, being there as a backup to do what I do best, so...
Yeah. If she wants to go, I could do like a backup.
You're all welcome to attend. This is open to all of you. It'd just be whether Lori and I present, or somebody else and I present, you know, that's what I'm...
Yeah, I like the rankings, you know, I agree with the golf cart crossing. I know that we submit that every year, try to get that, you know, approved on 441 there. We have it on 19, so, you know, maybe one day we can get that approved. I do like the stormwater improvement project, being at number one. Like you said, that is one of the projects that, you know, probably will have the more likely than not getting funded. And I know I was fortunate enough to go to Tallahassee and lobby for the funding last time, and I would like to be able to do that again as well. So, I mean, I'd also like to go and attend, Mrs. Mrur, and Mr. Stevenson, if we could all possibly try to go to that. If we'll then move with that, we don't need a motion for this, right?
It is move to approve the ranking as stated and the initiatives as stated.
I'll make a motion to, option one, and we accept the rankings and the initiatives and the people who will be...
Okay, we have a motion.
That's my second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I gotta say one thing. The senior center and the library, Mr. Drury, you were saying that the top three would have the best chance? You know, I'm part of the Historical Society, so I kind of feel like a dog, but I just wanted to say this, and then you guys tell me if I'm right or wrong. If the senior center and the library expansion go together, would it make sense, instead of having them three and four where they could be split up, would it be better to have them two and three so they could go together? If only the top three have a good chance? Does that make sense to anybody other than me?
It does, but the dollars are so high that you're not going to get them.
Okay.
Because now you go to a 3.6 million dollar program.
Done.
Any more discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries, four zero. All right, so now we have the budget hearing, but that cannot take place till 5:05, so we're going to go ahead and move on to, let's see, new, new business? Is there any new business? Any old business? All right, we're going to move on to the historical perspective. Tab 12, Taverries Historical Society, Mr. Betty Burley.
Well, my eye surgery went well, but it'll be another two weeks before I get glasses. I'm going to give a little history of the TNG railroad. In 1881, it was called the Taveries Brookfield Gulf. In 1885, it was the Taveries Apoca in Gulf. And then in 1900, it was the Taveries in Gulf. From 1934, oh, wait a minute, I have to get the bag of this. In the early 1900s, the track was so bad, the Railroad Commission allowed them to go only 10 miles an hour, and still there were daily derailments. Four-line blasts down the whistle, and the train crews were there with heavy chains, timbers, and jacks. They hooked the chains to large trees and pulled the cars back on the track. From 1934 till the end, the TNG shared the depot facilities with the Seaboard at Taveries. The last steam engine was sold for scrap in July of 1952. It made good profits in the 50s and 60s. The TNG was a very courteous and accommodating to its customers. Many times, a farmer needed a car on Sunday to load vegetables for northern markets. The farmer would call the ACL railroad, but they would say he could have a car out first thing Monday morning. The farmer would then call the TNG and get the reply, "We'll be there as..." The farmer would then call the TNG and get the reply, we'll be there as soon as we can get the steam up. Not only would they bring the car, but they waited for it to be loaded and took it back to Taverri's to make connection with the SNL for the northern markets. In 1926 was the last time the TNG would operate in the red. And the 1940s was a heyday for the TNG. It held more freight during the 10 years that it had ever had. In the 1960s, rapid news fell as trucks were eating heavily into the TNG's business. And December 29, 1969 was the final run for the TNG with Red Nut as the engineer. And I wanted to tell you kudos for the new news letter. That's great information. Good deal. Mark O'Keefe.
Thank you, Ms. Burley. We're gonna move on to audience to be heard. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard? No? Mrs. Luigis, if you can state your name and address.
Luigis 110, I'm Anthony Street, Taverri's Council, Mr. Drury and Directors. This Friday, the 20th of September at 6:00 p.m., we are having the first annual Hispanic Heritage opening at the Lake County Museum of Art. And on behalf of the Board of Directors of the museum, we'd like to invite each and everyone, we have three artists that have come from other parts of the state to join us in exhibit at the museum. So we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're gonna move on to reports. Mr. Drury?
Two things. The next council meeting, October the 2nd, Wednesday, we will have three, only three council members here. Two of our council members will be representing this city at the annual America in Bloom Conference. Thank you for taking time out of your personal lives and professional lives to do that for the city as we see who gets awards and learn a lot about making our city attractive. The following meeting is October the 16th. And that is Councilmember Kirby Smith's last meeting. I would like to do as we've done in the past, a farewell and thank you. Not a roast. Maybe yes, maybe no. Not a roast. At 3:00, before the council meeting. And people usually come anywhere between 3:00 and 4:00, coming at 3:30, 3:15, 3:45. He doesn't know anything about it. He'll know soon. And we'll, we'll do a couple of fun things and kind of talk about the last, what, 11 years he's been on the council and the good times, the bad times, the in-between times, and wish him well in his new endeavor as he leaves us at his last meeting. And then at 4:00, we'll have our regular city council meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Novak?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Reap?
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Tweedy?
Mr. Smith is on here this evening. Just in case any of y'all are wondering, today is National Cheeseburger. I'm here to favor Taverri's D-R-A-F-E. Delicious and healthy cheeseburger.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. We have one thing we haven't saw, our new city road signs on our state roads. If you haven't noticed, we drive down the state.
Thank you.
I have nothing today. Thank you.
Nothing, glad, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
Important news. I just got a flash on my phone that McDonald's is selling a 69-cent cheeseburger in respect of National Cheeseburger Day, today only. So that's important. But I know I've said it a couple of times, I'm going to say it again because I want to dovetail onto Luigis how clever she was. Friday night is a multi-layered night of arts and culture. So as you well know, it's our concert also in the square with many layers of activities and talent and that sort of thing. So folks can stroll through the town, walk down to Lu, walk down to us, and talk about walkable events. That's just fabulous. So thank you for thinking of that if you did. It was very clever. And that's all.
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Luigis?
The neighbor to the Garber rezoning and annexation that he recently approved filed an appeal in the circuit court, and we'll be handling that. Our response is due in about 30 days.
We're going to move on to council reports. This is August.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Stevenson?
One thing, one thing tonight. Mr. O'Keefe, the newsletter that I think Ms. Burley was holding up, that thing was awesome, man. I was reading that. I sent an email off to Mr. Drury when I saw it. My gosh, I just carry that around in my pocket. So when people start talking about Taverri's, I can show them all the great things. I was showing it off to folks at work when I opened my mail and got it, and everybody thought it was so cool. There's so many cool things going on. But I think that's really neat what you did there with that newsletter. So awesome, man.
Ms. Mr. Let's see, we have, how much time? Seven minutes. Why don't we, I don't have anything to report, so let's take about a three or four-minute recess, and we will come back and we will get started on the budget hearing. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We have the budget hearing for fiscal year 2019 through 2020, final millage budget. So I guess we have, Mr. Drury?
Sure. I'd like to provide a few highlights of the budget before turning it over to our finance director. The proposed debt service millage rate is decreased. The proposed property tax rate is decreased. The proposed 1.6% operational budget increase is less than the current inflation rate and significantly less than the forecasted inflation rate for the year that this budget covers. The proposed reserves for this city is increased. The Florida Benchmarking Consortium continues to identify Taverri's as one of the most efficient cities when compared to other Florida cities of similar size. The budget addresses expanding the library, the history museum, the senior services program, and the road paving program, as well as rebuilding the children's Wooton Wonderland playground. It calls for a complete rebuild of the seaplane base and marina with 98% of it being paid for by insurance proceeds. Property values continue to grow in this city. Due to this city's economic development program, new business startups, including manufacturing and medical, are at an all-time high, with our newest downtown manufacturing company, Sunday Cool, opening up its doors with 65 new employees. According to the Honorable Kerry Baker, property appraiser, Taverri's had more businesses open up this past year than any other city in Lake County. Yes, we are number one in Lake County with Claremont at number two. Also, according to the Honorable Kerry Baker, property appraiser, Taverri's had the greatest proposed millage rate decrease of any other city in Lake County. We are America's seaplane city. I'm proud to live here and call this my home. I'm proud of this city's accomplishments, and I'm proud of this budget. With that, I would like Lori to go ahead and present it and then open it up for public hearing and comment. Lori?
We need to start by reading the, reading everything in its entirety.
We have two resolutions at the second and final readings. Resolution 2019-07, a resolution adopting a final millage rate of 6.9500 for the city of Taverri's, Florida, for adult or taxes for fiscal year 2019-2020, setting forth a percent by which the millage rate is greater than the world back rate. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Taverri's, Florida, whereas the city of Taverri's of Lake County, Florida, on September 6th, adopted the 2019-2020 fiscal year tentative millage rate following a public hearing as required by Florida statute 200.065. Whereas the city of Taverri's of Lake County, Florida, following due public notices required by law, held a second public hearing on September 18, 2019, as required by Florida statute 200.065 on the 2019-2020 millage rate. And whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within Lake County has been certified by the county property appraiser to the city of Taverri's as $978,291,217. Therefore, be it resolved by the city of Taverri's, of Lake County, Florida, that one, the city of Taverri's fiscal year 2019-2020 operating millage rate to be levied is hereby set at 6.9500 mils, which millage rate is greater than the world back rate of 6.7733 by 2.61%. Two, the voted debt service millage rate is set at .2932 mils for fiscal year 2019-2020. And three, the resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption. And then we also have resolution 2019-08, a resolution adopting the final budget for the city of Taverri's, Florida, for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Taverri's, Florida, whereas a public hearing on the tentative 2019-2020 budget was held at the Taverri City Hall Council Chambers in the city of Taverri's, Florida, Lake County, Florida, on Friday, September 6, 2019, at 5:05 p.m., as required by Florida statute 200.065. And whereas the general public was given an opportunity to express its views pertaining to the tentative budget, and whereas the city council approved the tentative budget for 2019-2020, and whereas the second public hearing on the proposed 2019-2020 budget was held in the council chambers at the Taverri City Hall 201 East Main Street in the city of Taverri's, Florida, on Wednesday, September 18, 2019, at 5:05 p.m. Now therefore, be it resolved that the budget for 2019-2020 fiscal year for the city of Taverri's, Florida, is hereby adopted by the Taverri City Council in the amount of $73,818,967 at public hearing on this 18th day of September, 2019. This resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, city clerk. Thanks, John, Mayor, Council. I want to tag on to some things that John had mentioned and get to the record. And as with the millage and budget, the millage is required to be considered by the board first before the budget is voted on. And some of the things were required by the state to get into the record is the things supporting the millage that you will vote on here tonight. So with that said, I'll just, I may be redundant in some of the things that were already said. The total budget for FY 2020, all funds, totaled $73,818,967. That's a fully balanced budget. The general fund budget is $19,169,259. $250, excuse me. That budget is a fully balanced budget. The budget includes a similar level of service to our residents. The budget, the millage supports a similar level of service. The millage rate is a decrease from 7.1119 mils to 6.950 mils, which is 2.27% lower than the last year's adopted millage rate. The debt service millage rate is a decrease from .3052 to .2932, which is a 3.93% decrease over prior year adopted debt service millage rate. The total millage rate is a 2.34% decrease over the prior year adopted millage rates, if you combine both rates. There's an increase for reserve appropriations at $42,832. Fire assessment level remains the same. Employee raises are in the budget. Healthcare increased cost is in the budget at 3% for the employer and 3% increase for the employee. Two new positions, a staff accountant and a warehouse customer service clerk, part-time position. There's increased street paving in the budget, a total of 172,000-plus grants totaling approximately $225,000. Library expansion is included in the budget, history museum, preliminary design and services, senior city, excuse me, can't speak tonight, I guess. Senior center preliminary design service for grant application, a big public works facility, rebuilding for the seaplane base and marina, renewed police cars, cemetery improvements with restrooms, rebuilding of the Wooton Wonderland children's playground, expanded Christmas light program, and expanded fireworks for July 4th. And just as, also put in the record is the timeline for the budget process. July 3rd, city council held a budget workshop and the staff presented the budget to council. July 17, council held the budget workshop, and the enterprise and special funds were presented to council. July 24th, the city council held a workshop and set the maximum tentative millage rate. August 7, the city council held a budget workshop and the staff presented the capital improvement plan. August 21, city council held a budget workshop. September 6, the city council held the first public hearing to approve the tentative millage rate. All funds are balanced, and again, the millage rate before you is 6.950 for the general operating fund and .2932 for the debt service, voted debt service. If you have, we'll leave that to council to either approve or not approve the millage rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hooten.
We do have two speakers, and as we do in public hearings, we also open it up to the general public.
Darwin Bastin, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Darwin Bastin, and I have the 331 lecture. Thanks for the opportunity to offer some comments today. And I also want to thank John, and Lori, and Brett, who spent a, well, I would consider substantial amount of their day tolerating the questions and the comments that I had yesterday. It's very, very helpful. I would hope that everybody could have come away with the same general understanding of what's trying to be done for the city and by the council and by the city management that causes to be, you know, a great place to live. My comments are, I don't want them to be interpreted as criticisms. I want them to be interpreted as issues and thoughts and some suggestions that are meant really to be helpful, not meant to be critical, and certainly not meant to be personal in any way, shape, or form. I will say this, I think that Taverri's probably takes first prize in the size of the budget that's measured by the number of pages. I'm not sure John may have that record from some other, some other places, but in terms of its size, and it is a very, very, very large document to go through. It's too bad that it can no longer be put on, or at this time at least, can be put online because that would give everybody, you know, a chance to do it. So if anybody wants to get it, you come down to pick it up and thank somebody for copying 500 pages, you know, so that we can look at it. The budget reflects a very, very, very aggressive program. Having had John explain yesterday where the city has come from over the last five, six, I've been here seven years. six years, I've been here seven years. I've probably been absent from anything like this for a large part of that because my responsibility is to create a contract and make it work. But it is a very aggressive program. And it does reflect the plan that was put forth several years ago for downtown, so that the result would be that it could be attractive and a better place to try to get people to come. And the budget reflects that, but I think also reflects it by observation and driving around. And if you get four blocks away from downtown, it's a different, whole different picture that you can get from the rest of the community. And I'm not saying that that is a bad thing, but it clearly is reflected in the budget. As one example, I did go through the 500 pages, but yeah. As one example for me, one and a half employees is involved in paving two and a half miles of streets last year, and you have 60-plus miles in a total expenditure of $172,000, even the planned expenditure for the next year of $225,000, I think it's importantly small relative to what it should be. If you want people to love you, get good streets to drive on, and they will. And I also say that because somebody that I know very clearly lives on a street that is badly needed or repaired. So I, compared to what is expended to downtown, or reflect that there's four full-time employees at the pavilion, and I'm not criticizing that, I'm just saying that between the operational costs there and the debt service costs there, it seems to me like a couple things are just out of proportion. There's a couple things that are happening that I think are very, very good. And John and Lori were even, when they were open, they actually discussed them yesterday.
Mr. Smith, if you could.
If you want the people to know what's going on, you can't expect them to dig it out because, you know, I worked more than 22 years for two organizations. One of them had 10,000 members, one of them had 100 firm company members, and if you want to know how they feel about things, you got to do a survey. Every once in a while, just have a total independent survey done, send it to them, send them a stamped return envelope, and you'll get a lot of returns, and you'll get a lot of thoughts expressed.
Mr. Baston, thank you very much. I really appreciate the comments. You exceeded your.
I exceeded my.
Yes.
That was my.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate the information.
Vance Yocum, if you could come to the podium. State your name and address.
Hi, Vance Yocum. I write the Fiscal Watchdog Blog at FiscalRangers.com. I wanted to also make some observations about spending. First of all, I'd like to say I think the staff and the city manager are great, but the direction of the city council, I think, over the past years and this year with this budget and millage is a bit, needs some constructive criticism. I brought this prop here because basically someone buys property in Tavares, and I think they need to have a warning, kind of like on a cigarette package, you know? And so I put a warning on the back of here. Now, the city clerk will have a hard time putting this in the keyboard, so I've got a printed copy I'll give you. But there are, this is like a property buyer's kit for residential homes and commercial buildings in the Tavares, Florida area. And I think, you know, I consider you now to be spend-a-lot city. I looked at this budget and the increases, and then you heard the retired folks earlier talk about that they're on a retired and fixed income. You're increasing the wastewater rates, 5 percent for the first two years, and then 3 percent, and then you quote an average that's not compounded. And you talk about making money operationally on the pavilion, but you fail to include the allocation for debt for the building and the facility. That's kind of like, Vice Mayor Fister, who just left, if she broke even on her restaurant operations but didn't contribute anything towards the rent or the building mortgage. And that's what I'm afraid. There's a number of things that I see here that are only partially correct from a conservative accounting and auditing standpoint. You know, Grohl Land is outsourcing their wastewater system. The county is outsourcing their fleet management. I haven't heard any talk about that. When we talk about these department budgets, I don't hear that part of the deal for getting these values is that you're setting some sort of a cost reduction goal on the average cost per home or average cost per capita. The other thing is, as you've seen, you've been approving high-density development proposals in areas that are unincorporated, and it's just inflamed people out there. You've heard them, they've come here, and you just don't listen to them. You go ahead and do that. I don't know if you've seen the county board meeting where they talked about that use as ISBA, but they actually are putting in criteria for them, are very close to not approving it because of what's happened in this city, and because of all the feedback the county commission has gotten on your approval of high-density developments that inflame people in the rural areas of this county. I've got a whole list of other things here, but I think I heard that the city's got $55 million of debt. If the referendum is approved, you're going to, and some other things, you're probably going to get close to $100 million in debt for this city. And I've got some things here of transparency. I've mentioned them before, but I really think that needs to be addressed because I don't think some of the statements that I've heard here today are completely accurate. And again, it comes from being a guy who's caught international sales managers mistating operational figures and other things like that. They come from an area where you have accounting statements that reflect a proper business-type approach in explaining where your money is going. And so with that, I will just say that you, the county tax appraiser, I mean, the property appraiser, he's got a sheet up on his website, and he shows that your valuations went up 10.15 percent. So even if you slightly reduced your millage rate, your people are going to be hit with a tax increase because the valuation increases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum. Is there any other requests to speak that you have?
No more requests to speak.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes.
Okay, my name's Ralph Smith, and my address is 111 Lakeview Lane over at Mount Door. I'm a business owner in Tavares, as most of you know, Lake Tire and Auto, and been there 33 years. And before I get to the context, I want to say, I want to tell you a little story first. First of all, I was a John Drury fan before it was cool to be a John Drury fan, when he was coming. I love this guy. He has done, and even my critical, my friends who are the same political persuasion, I'm a critical of John, always backing because of this right here. The man is honest, he's transparent, and number one, he's not the one makes the decisions. It's the three of you that are up there now and the other two that aren't when they are here. He's an idea guy. He's an implementer. He does what y'all tell him to. Now, he may be a better salesman than the average dude, so he gets more stuff done, but that's on y'all to use good discretion as buying into his ideas and his beliefs and dreams. My argument isn't so much about your budget. I think yours is better than some. I think it could be better. The only thing, and John was kind enough to give me a copy of the budget. I went through the thing, and I looked at it, and I said, oh, yeah, look here, here, here. Now, I look back, and it's all the things he's already cut, okay? The only thing I didn't see there, though I bring to question, is you have plans for $520,000 improvement to the concession out at bathrooms over there at Woodley. And I don't know, guys, $520,000 builds, we have a mansion, okay? I don't know that you need bathrooms and concessions standing quite that ostentatious. However, that's the only thing I'm going to gripe about. I won't give you this quick story real quick, I know I've probably got about a minute and a half left. Friend of mine, one of Uganda, who's a missionary over there, and y'all might know him, his father is Mark Douglas, he's a, used to be pastor of church over in Eustis. And in any event, I was just kind of curious, you know, what's that country all about? Well, their landmass is about equivalent to Georgia and South Carolina, and they have 90 million residents. So imagine 90 million people, which is what, a third, basically, two-sevenths of what we have here in the U.S., right? Guess what their per capita, their gross domestic product is and their per capita income? It's basically equivalent to Lake County's. 90 million people, we got what, a third of a million? So that basically means the net worth of your average Ugandan is 1/270 of Lake County. Yet somehow, at least since Idi Amin's been gone, the older ones, you remember him, that used to be the president who hated his own people, the Canada guy. But anyway, since he's been gone, their population creeps. In other words, people find a way. So I would just challenge you guys, not so much for this budget, I know you're probably locked in, I'm coming here at the 11th hour to say, hey, drop another tenth of a mil or something like that, okay? But going forward, always remember, staff will find a way. This guy will find a way, believe me. And just throw one thing out, I put this on Facebook a little bit ago, and I said this a few years ago on Channel 9 regarding the Lake County thing. Tony Mack did this back when he ran against the gentleman he lost to, which was Bill Nelson, who had been stopped beat this last election term. 1 percent. Ask every vendor, cut everybody 1 percent. Everything you got that you vetted, you've done your homework, done it, do 1 percent. See where that's at. Start with me, I'm one of your vendors. I'd gladly give it up. And I will promise you, your other vendors will too. Well, they may not do it as voluntarily like I'm doing, but believe it or not, they'll accept it. Because if they don't, you'll buy from their competitor who will gladly accept it. So just think outside the box, please, if not tonight, going forward, and try to keep taxes as low as you can in this committee. Because beyond that, I have nothing bad to say about Tavares. It is a fine city, it's ran well, and you have a great staff of people, even Bob Tweedy's a good guy. And if I may give one last plug, since it's National hamburger Day, if the mayor will indulge me, I would recommend going over to Fish Camp, where you also have a cheeseburger called the Big Mouth Ralph, and you get a fried pickle with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, Mr. Smith, to all of you. State your name and address, and you can say about it tonight.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Drury, city staff, Mr. Williams, Kerry, Santoro, Earl Hartman. I know this has been a stressful time for city staff, it always has been, been there, done that, but all I can say is, job well done. People should appreciate all of the things that you do in order to put this thing together. Guess what? Tomorrow it starts all over again for next year. But again, thank you very much for the job well done. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? All right. Well, council? Questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2019-07, setting the final millage rate for fiscal year 2019-2020.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Open up for discussion. I just, you know, I just want to thank the staff, what a wonderful job that y'all did with this, this council. I know that one of the main priorities we had coming into this budget cycle was to lower the millage, and that's what we did. And we had all these wonderful projects that we were able to accomplish as well. And as Mr. Drury pointed out, we were able to lower our rate the most of any other city in the entire county.
That's wrong.
For that, I'm very, very proud. You can look on the tax collector, the property appraisers' website, and you can see it right there. So I'm very, very happy about that. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-0. We're going to move on to tab number 11. That would be setting the final budget. Mr. Drury?
Two speakers on that. One speaker on that one.
Vance Yocum, if you'd like to come to the podium.
No, I've covered it.
Vance Yocum passes. You can open it up.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to be heard? Now, when we had the other police item, did we have?
We have extra.
We have extra money that we need to.
Yes, you have an opportunity to dedicate that to reserves unless you choose something else.
I'd like to put it in reserves.
I was going to suggest the same thing, so the money that we save on the resource officer that went in reserves, we're going to go ahead and keep that 18,000.
$152,000.
Okay, so that was more that we were able to add to reserves.
Yes, that, I can give, I had Brett create an alternate resolution just in case of various scenarios we wanted to be familiar with. And it looks like your reserve appropriations for the year, or the amount you're putting in reserves for the total budget for general public will be $60,994. So that's quite a bit up from what we originally had estimated at 35.
All right. All right, council?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-08, final budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 with the changes that we just made.
I second that. I'll make it.
Say it all over for discussion.
Mr. Smith, I heard what you said when you came up to the podium. I said this from the very beginning, whether I'm doing a good job or not is up to other people, but there is nothing that we do that is more important than taking your money and figuring out how to spend it. I believe that is the most important thing we do. I take it very, very serious, whether I'm going to go to town or not. It is the most important, in my estimation, it's the most important thing we'll do. So I heard every word that you said, sir.
Thank you. A second.
Yeah, with a second for discussion, okay? So we have a motion and a second still open for discussion. Any more discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 3-0. And with no other business, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.